Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, December 16th, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell. Councilwoman Cruz is absent with notice. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Present.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we get to our agenda this evening, I just wanted to have a moment of silence. In the last week or two, Al Tally, who was a Southfield resident since 1971, he was 94 years old, and he's most famous for being the beloved husband of our former councilwoman, Barbara Tally, passed away. And so, he was very influential, helping his wife in her duties, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Detail, turn it up! Carry colors! Forward march! Left turn! Detail, present, march!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail, order, march! Right turn! Forward march!
You can be seated. Our first presentation this evening is our fire department. I'd like to call upon our fire chief, Johnny Menefee, for the badge pinning and swearing in for some new Southfield fire officers. And as always, we're always excited when we have some new firefighters, or promoting firefighters, or any of our law enforcement. And it's especially telling the, we always say, we always try to do what we can for our fire department. And tonight, we're actually going to be approving some additional turnout gear and some other new rescue trailer and different, other equipment for our fire department. So, we're always trying to get them the best equipment, the newest equipment, so they can do their job effectively and stay safe. So, Chief, take that away.
Greetings, Mr. President, Council, Mayor, City Administrator, other elected officials, residents, and visitors of Southfield. As you said, I'm Chief Johnny Menefee. I brought Deputy Macias along with me also on this great day. I'm honored to stand before you, to present with you five candidates to be pinned today, to be sworn in as, one as an inspector, two as firefighter paramedics, and two as firefighters. Back with the inspector. The promotional process is a very competitive process. You know, firefighters have an opportunity, after five years of service, to apply to be an inspector. They have to go through a written examination, along with a oral interview, and as well as with that, have to become certified as a fire inspector and as an investigator. With that, as far as our newly sworn in firefighters here, just to enter our doors, they have to go through a five-step process, with a written exam, an oral interview, they are giving an extensive background, psychological tests, and a medical evaluation. A couple of them have already completed their paramedic training, which is a 15-month process of them having classroom work, they have clinical hours in the hospital, as well as clinical hours on the truck. And after that, then they take a five-part national registry test to get their paramedic license. And I want to tell you that all the firefighters have been evaluated by their peers, their officers, and the command staff, and they not only met our expectations, but exceeded it. And with that, they've been, for the last year of probation, they've been learning how to become firefighters and rescue, learning medical procedures, learning how to properly drive a fire truck, and how to get along in the day-to-day operations as a firefighter and going on calls in all the different hours in a 24-hour period of time. So, with that, I'd like to start off by calling Inspector Montgomery, badge number 269. He has 21 years of service and is a veteran of the Navy. All right. Next, we're going to call up firefighter paramedic Plaz, badge number 365. Plaz has pre-service, he worked two years in Howell Fire Department. Next, we're going to call up firefighter paramedic Blue, badge number 367. We were able to get him straight out of the academy at OCC, so. Next, we'll call up firefighter Sheldon, badge number 368. We were able to get him from, he has pre-fire experience in the Fenton Fire Department, he's also in the air guard. And that's B.C. Miller is going to pin him. And last but not least, firefighter Bankstall, badge number 369. We were also able to get him out of OCC's fire academy, too, so. All right. At this time, I'd like to invite our city clerk up to swear in our new officer and firefighters. Mrs. Jackson.
Please, raise your hands if you're ready. I do swear. I swear. Or I bet I was court. The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
The City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform.
Perform.
This will be the office, and these are the positions, firefighter paramedic, firefighter, and firefighter inspector. In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan.
And the State of Michigan.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
Thank you, subscribe and sworn to me before me this day, December 16th, 24th. Congratulations.
I just want to take a moment of privilege, and I just want to say, it was very hard for me to do, because our new fire inspector, Mr. Ivan Montgomery, got my husband to the hospital alive before he passed away. And so, I just appreciate you so much. Every time I see you, I just get filled up. So, you all will be saving lives, and thank you.
I know that look, Mr. President, I'll be quick. I'll be, I'll be quick. I just want to thank again, I want to thank the City of Southfield, I want to thank Council, City Administrator, for the continued support of the fire department, also our Human Resources Department, especially Jessica Karen, who helped us vet the best possible applicants to be firefighters in our cities, as well as the Police Department doing the backgrounds, was a good, and also our city, one of my assistants, Marcy, for that. You know, to the inspector, to the inspector and the firefighters, you know, there's, you know, when I, when I was looking at this, I put, we put it together, is that, you know, inspector has 21 years on the department? There is 100 badge numbers between them, 369, 269. I mean, that's just how much of our turnover that we've had, you know, quite a bit, that there's 100 numbers, 100 firefighters in between you two, you know? Time goes fast, you know? Embrace it, embrace it. Do as much as you can, not as little as you can get away with, is what I hope for you, you know, when, with your career, you know, with it. Remember this moment, remember this time in your life of why you got into the fire service, of how you wanted to help people and help your community. Wow, you know, what an honor that is, that you get to do that. You get to be there with people on their worst day and help bring some type of closure to them, as we heard a personal story from the city clerk, you know? Hold on to that, you know? I know you're going to see a lot, you're going to go through a lot, and I expect that. I've given you my expectations, like, look, you treat everyone like my mother, sister, father, one of my kids, right? You do that, I have your back, you know? And that's what we expect, inspect moving forward. So, I have nothing but the best for you, and wish you the best in your career. For the families, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for sharing your loved ones with us, for you backing them and actually allowing them to live out their dream and to serve others. So, for that, I applaud you. I'm not hard to find, if you have a problem with them, or I need to have a talk with them, you know? I'm not, I'm not hard to find, though, but welcome to the family. At this time, that concludes our pinning ceremony. If you don't want to stay for the whole council meeting, this is the time where we get up as a group, and we kindly exit the, exit.
Can we leave, too?
No, no, you can't, you can't leave.
Chief, are there, are you still accepting applications?
Yes.
Are you still recruiting?
Yes, we're still recruiting, still actively recruiting.
And what's the best way for someone to?
They can go on the website, I mean, we have, now we're having it through an outside agency of MCO, but we, but all they got to do is go on the city's website, and they're actually able to see the applications to apply.
Okay, perfect.
All right?
Thank you.
I'll be back. Okay, all right.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of our Greg Kennedy Community Service Award to Darla Van Hoy.
Good evening, honorable Council and Mayor. For the viewing audience, my name is Michael Mannion. I'm the Community Relations Director for the City of Southfield. It's my honor tonight to be before you to present the 2025 Greg Kennedy Community Service Award. This award is a very prestigious award. In the city's inception, since the award has began, there's only been nine past recipients. So, again, it's a very prestigious award based on the life and legacy of the former Greg Kennedy, who is very active and involved in the community, a number of things from fostering children to helping in senior homes, and he just did a number of programs throughout the community and had a very lasting legacy. So, again, the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award is, nominations are received every year by the city's Total Living Commission, and this year, we received an outstanding nomination. The Total Living Commission unanimously approved, and with that, I would like to bring up our Total Living Commission chairperson with us tonight, Deborah Walton Medley, who will tell you more about the award and make the presentation.
Good evening, Council and officials. Just as Michael said, we are tasked every year to review and approve the nomination for the Greg Kennedy Community Service Award. First, I would like to ask if there are any other Total Living Commissioners in the room, if they would stand?
We've got one.
Okay, Harmon, yes. So, we did review the nomination, and we are pleased to come before you to present the 2024 Greg Kennedy's Community Service Award to Darla Van Hoy. Mrs. Darla Van Hoy has been active in the community for many years. She is currently working on various documents and archives of the late, longtime mayor, Donald Fracassi. Mrs. Van Hoy volunteered over 200 hours of her time over the past year, sorting through scores of boxes of records, documents, and mementos belonging to former Southfield mayor. She has greatly assisted in preserving those documents of historical value to the city, which have been turned over to the Southfield Public Library. She is also responsible for the city recently receiving the President's Award from the Keep Michigan Beautiful for the Edge River Farm Barn, a historical landmark in the city. During Black History Month, she plays the role of Viola Leozzo, a civil rights activist. She is a recipient of the 2024 Extra Mile Award from Mayor Cyver because of her extraordinary volunteer work in the community and her overall commitment to the city of Southfield. Darla currently serves as treasurer of the Southfield Friends of the Library for the last seven years. As a member of the Southfield Parks and Garden, she has participated in organizing plant swaps, local and regional meetings, garden walks, and much more. She is a mother of two daughters, Stephanie and Christina, and two wonderful grandchildren, Dylan and Julia. During her spare time, she loves gardening, walking, and traveling abroad, and most importantly, spending time with her family. Please help me congratulate Darla.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to, hi there. I've lived in Southfield for 45 years. It's a wonderful city, I'm really happy to be here, and I love the volunteer work I've been doing. The Southfield Historical Society helped greatly with my board. A lot of the work with Lori Penn and Mayor Cyver has helped a lot as well. We've got a great community. The Friends of the Library and Yolanda Haynes has, were like twins when it comes to working with that organization, and the Southfield Parks and Garden Club, and Pat McLemore, and everyone in the Parks and Garden Club. I thank you very much for this award, the Total Living Commission, Yolanda especially, and thank you very much for this incredible honor.
Thank you. Thank you, oh my God.
Would you like to introduce your family that's here with you?
Oh, my family. My daughter Stephanie, and my daughter Christina, her son-in-law Brian Hewitt, Julia and Dylan Hewitt, my brother-in-law, Yolth Fanboy, and his wife Carrie, my sister Jill, and her husband Rob, I have neighbors here, Tim and Erica, co-herd, and my friend Phil, my co-herds in crime, Kathleen, Barbara, and Lori. Sue Calderwood is here from the Friends of the Library, my cousin, she walks with me every morning at Home Depot in La Jolla, and I hope I didn't forget any of them.
Rosemary.
Oh, Rosemary's always taking pictures! Oh, yeah, I know. Well, and she received this award a few years ago, so I feel like I'm in really great company, thank you so much.
If I could just get one photo with the mayor and our fellow members.
Okay, whatever you say.
On three, one, two, three.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, yes. Thank you, thank you. Yes, thank you. Thanks, Dan. Thanks. Thank you, well, you know, we've all had Mary Thompson's birthday, and I didn't do any of this alone, no way.
Lot of good things going on this evening. Our next presentation, I'd like to call on Rabbi Mendelstein to talk about the Southfield menorah lighting.
Thank you very much, Council President Mandelbaum, all the council members, the mayor, the police chief, the fire chief, the Department of Public Works, and all the departments of the city for once again having our Southfield menorah lighting, as we've had for many years. And I'm proud to be here again and help lead the menorah lighting. When COVID hit, we knew we had to add extra light, so we added on a parade or vehicle procession that started near the Young Israel Southfield in the Stevenson School Lot, and we'll be doing that once again, where we can spread even more light, because as my mentor and teacher, the Lababitcherebe taught me, that whenever there's darkness, we need to add light. But even a little bit of light, even a single candle sheds a lot of light when there is darkness. And unfortunately, the world is still dark, so we have to add not just a little light, but a lot of light. And therefore, even though this year, we have a lot of holidays merging at once, but we're inviting everyone who is in town to please come and join us, because we need a lot of light, and we will do that on Monday, December 30th, starting at the Stevenson School Lot, near Young Israel Southfield, and we will have a vehicle procession with a police escort, and we will go through many of the sideblocks until we make it back here to the city, followed, this will start at 5:00 will be the lineup, meaning that's when we're going to start lining up at the school. At 5:30, the vehicle procession will start, and we'll make our way to the city. At about 6:00, we'll get here, and in the parking lot right nearby, we will have a menorah lighting, followed by a fire show, and goodies for everyone who, and hopefully hot drinks. And we will be here, rain, snow, shine, dark, light, whatever it is, we will be here. As many of you remember, we've had some years where it was bright and light with lots of snow. So, I invite everyone to please come and join us. Everyone who is, lives in the City of South, or everyone who's visiting the City of South, or everybody from all around, please come and join us on Monday, December 30th, Monday, December 30th, yes, at, starting at 5:00, as we get together to spread a lot of light. And I want to thank the city again for being a great city where we can practice our religion freely. As we know, this country, and the state, and the city allows us the freedom of religion, not the freedom from religion, that each one can practice their religion freedom, freedom, all religions, safely, proudly, and that's what we're going to do on Monday, December 30th. So, I want to thank everyone for enabling that all year round, not just during the holiday season, but all year round, to be able to do that in a free and safe manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Everyone joining? Hope so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now we're up to our communications portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the president officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent- If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Garland McWilliams.
Good morning. Boy, oh, boy. You know, I feel I mean a lot of good company today, all these beautiful presentations and everything. But I have a concern. And I've voiced this concern before. It concerns our streets and roads. You know, last fall, they did some work on my street. I live on Pennsylvania Street off of Greenfield, and that was really appreciated. But there's still a lot more work to be done. They redid Pierce, they blacktopped it, and that was a horrible road. And that was greatly appreciated. I talked to my neighbors, and they say, wow, we finally got something done and everything. And I always invite everybody to come to the council meeting and, you know, voice your grievances, opinions, and everything. One of my biggest concerns is Mount Vernon. And I've brought this up before. And I understand the federal government is trying to get some billions of dollars to streets, infrastructure, and everything. And I'd like to see us tap into that. You know, it's an opportunity to really get things going as far as our roads. The... On my street, there's some areas where you can't get out your driveway without, you know... You're almost tearing up your... Not, I won't say tearing up your car, but, you know, it's very difficult. The road is all torn up and everything, and it shouldn't be. You know, this is Southfield, you know? We can do a lot better than that. You know, where there... I always say, where there is a will, there's a way to get stuff done. And, you know, I'd like to see that done. You know, I know the period of road construction is about over right now. But I'd like to see something in the spring where we put, especially Mount Vernon, on the front... One of the areas we really need to get squared away, you know? And it would be greatly appreciated. And my neighbors would... In fact, one of my neighbors that got her area squared away gave me a little gift card, and I said, what is that? And I said, oh, I appreciate it. And, you know, people will appreciate your work, you know? These... We don't get enough feedback from the council. Maybe a newsletter come out to state, you know, what we're doing for our roads especially. And it would be greatly appreciated. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Vanetta Mitchell.
Good evening. Greetings to the council, to the president, and also to the mayor. My name is Vanetta Mitchell, and I am currently the new president for Hampshire Woods Neighborhood Association. And this is my vice president. We just recently were able to reactivate our neighborhood association, which has been inactive since before COVID. Our mission is for us to be a community, a neighborhood united for all, which aligns with the center... The city of Southfield, the center of it all. Our goals and objectives are to foster a safe, collaborative, and beautiful united community. We hope to promote neighborhood beautification. We need to establish strong partnerships, have open communication, and collective efforts to reflect our shared views. Now, some of the challenges, though, that we have faced since we reactivated is obtaining cooperation from the previous administration. But we're working through that as well. We have been able to establish past practices. We adopted our new bylaws, and we're moving forward. We hope to have a community impact in terms of collaborating with other neighborhood associations around us and also to help maintain standards of living in our Southfield community. Some of our future plans include helping to develop our neighborhood youth by partnering with already established mentoring programs and also to provide community service opportunities that allow our youth to get back to the community, give back to the community in which they need. Some of the support that we're asking or that we need is aid in connecting with the residents and homeowners of our Hampshire Woods Neighborhood Association. We also need support in helping to connect with other neighborhood associations and also to provide resources to help us beautify our neighborhood and help the upkeep of Hampshire Woods. And for that, I thank you for listening, and we look forward to getting the support of our city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Evelyn Gloeder. Evelyn? Okay, yeah. Do you want to speak now or during the public hearing?
I speak in the public.
Okay. And then the next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, Southfield resident. A month ago, I asked four questions of the council dealing with money. To this point, I have not received any answer or a letter back stating for an extension to give me back a reply. So the questions I asked, and I like the fact that this is ringing. How much money was spent on lawsuits? Didn't get that from SNRI. How much money was spent on closing the loophole that SNRI used to get property? How much money was spent on placing sewer lines on my street and then removing them and not installing them because that was a waste of money? All this money could have been used for a swimming pool, but we wasted it. And where were there any residents on Circle Drive that stopped Lawrence Tech from receiving a sewer line? I drew a picture and I showed it last week. There was only six homes on there. I would like to know how come we don't have a sewer line since you was putting a dorm on there? Or is it that you are incompetent and we're going to put one on the street with no sewer line and have a dorm there which has a bunch of bathrooms? And it went through both planning and it came to here? And you didn't ask questions like you do of everybody else that comes here? A bunch of them that are relevant, that make sense. I am past the thirty days. I should receive some type of notice as to why I haven't received this at the point. And I also wonder why how come most of you haven't looked into some of the things I've asked about or even questioned about it? Because it would seem like where our money is going, you would want to know. And I asked how come that money can't be spent towards other things that the residents of the city of Southfield need and/or want? I think these are very relevant questions. I think this is part of what your job is to do, is to make sure our money is being spent wisely and not foolishly. So I would love to get an answer back from you about this. And I would definitely want one on the dorm and how come there was no sewer line there? And which were the properties that said no? Was it a resident or was it Lawrence Tech that stopped the sewer line from getting there? And six homes, straight shot there. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our communication. I just want to address some of the comments that were made. Ms. Mitchell? If you can hold on one second, I want to give you some answers to your questions since you're about to leave. Michael Mannion, who was here earlier, who did one of the presentations, he runs our community relations department, but he also helps homeowner associations. You can reach out to him, he still may be in the hall. But he also has... His phone number is 248-796-5130. And he... There's a number of resources that he can offer homeowner associations to help you, now that you're reactivated, but he can help with mailings. And there's other types of resources that, depending on your needs, that he may have available for you to help reach your neighbors and meet and different things like that. So you can reach out to him. And we thank you for taking the lead in reactivating your homeowner association. And just know that the city is here to help you within a certain capacity. But we do have some resources to help you with reaching out to your neighbors. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may. I met with Mr. Keeler regarding his questions, although they were not addressed to me, they were addressed to the clerk who passed them on to me. I met with him for forty-five minutes and answered the questions that really were not... Several of his questions have to do with an independent nonprofit that's not part of the city, the SNRI lawsuits. I did explain to him, from my knowledge, it was over a million dollars that the nonprofit paid for those lawsuits and were successful in winning every one of them. The judgments came in favor of the SNRI program. And I did explain to him the other... The two questions that were on his list. The sewer questions, I could not answer. But he did get some answers.
Okay. Mr. Mitchell, can you answer the sewer questions? Or do we need additional?
Just to the sewer question, over the course of the last three or four years, we've responded. We've provided information, the cost of building out a line. The dorm does have a sewer line. And this is all about a time... You're going back to the late 90s, early 2000s, when a neighborhood was asked to make a decision about whether or not they wanted a sewer line through. They voted no. Now subsequently, most of those owners have now moved on and sold their property to Lawrence Tech. But, you know, you're going back in some twenty-plus years. And when that decision was made, people engaged, and there was not a majority of people in favor of it. I can tell you the dorm does have a sewer line. We have an ordinance on our book that requires your... If you are not connected to city sewer, you have to have your septic system inspected every three years. Those letters go out, we work with people to get them inspected. If there's no sewer line available, the option is to rebuild their system. You know, I can pull out the letters from a few years ago, previous councils were copied. But the cost of building a sewer line to service the residents there is just roughly under $700,000, and I'll have a city engineer pull it. But more importantly, there would not be enough volume going through that sewer line. If you recall those letters, and I'll have the city engineer, Lee Schultz, will share that communication again. But I believe that was sent in the last two years. And that communication has been put out there a couple times.
Okay, thank you. And then our first speaker, Mr. McWilliams, spoke about road repair, which I'm sure we all know, there's lots of cities in the... Lots of streets in the city that need repair. In the last ten years, the city has actually either rebuilt or repaved over fifty percent of all of our roads, and we have 246 miles of road. On our city's website, on the homepage, on the bottom, there's a construction tab, and it talks about all the past projects, all the future potential projects of... for roads within the city's limits, as well as how the city determines which roads need to be rehabbed. There's a Pacer rating that is conducted about the the street and the current construction, if it's kind of... If it's failing, if it's good, moderate, excellent. And we also combine a lot of our road construction work with our sewer line work because we want to get the best efficiency out of our dollars, so we combine a lot of that work. Mount Vernon is one of those streets that we do... We know does need to be repaired. And even tonight, we're going to be... We've already approved some projects for next year. We're going to be approving some additional ones tonight. For Mount Vernon, I know this is probably not the area of Mount Vernon that you want to see repaired, but Mount Vernon between Southfield Road and Northwestern Highway, they've already had pre-construction meetings with some of the neighbors who live along that road because we do have funding that that street will be rehabbed next year. Keeping my fingers crossed, nothing's official until we see the machines move in. But they did have conversations with the neighbors, getting their input on potential designs. They're in the design phase before we can figure out the cost and how to go about that. But that Mount Vernon between Southfield and Northwestern is on the plans for next year's construction projects. Our city engineer is in the room if you want to talk to her outside as well. So I do want to let you know, we are aware and we are working on it. Unfortunately, because the city does have 246 miles of road, we have to strategically fix all the streets, and we do the best that we can. So, but we do appreciate you coming and bringing those to our attention. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda are number of minutes.
For the chair?
Yes.
I move that we remove the minutes from the agenda.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to remove the minutes from the agenda for this evening. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. We will bring those back at our next meeting. Consent agenda. These items are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Council, do you have any items you wish pulled for further discussion? Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item D. Westlaw Online.
Okay. Council, any other items? Yes?
I have a question on item B as a boy.
Okay. Any other items, council?
For the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda after discussion for A, Oakland County Human Trafficking Task Force Agreement between Oakland County and City of Southfield. B, Authorization to Purchase New and Replacement Turnout Gear for the Fire Department. C, Purchase an Upliv replacement enclosed trench rescue trailer for Fire Department. D, Authorization to Purchase Westlaw Online and Print Legal Research Products for the City Attorney's Office. E, Authorization to Extend the Lead Service Verification and Replacement Contract. F, Approval of Agreement for Beach Road Pathway from Nine Mile Road to Chiwasi Road. G, Approval for Rutland Avenue Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements between Northwestern Highway and Nine Mile Road. G, Approval for Rutland Avenue Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements between Northwestern Highway and Nine Mile Road. H, Annual Adoption of the 2025 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under MCL 211.7U. I, Annual Update of Depository Resolution. J, Annual Update of City Investment Policy. That concludes items in the consent agenda. Was there more?
No.
Item D is being pulled.
Yeah, yeah. I just.
I, Council President, I have a different agenda, so my question really was on, I don't know. I pulled the agenda from up there, but it was different than what was read, so. My question is for the trench rescue trailer. I apologize.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor right now from Councilman Hicks, is there a second? After question, I just, I want.
Can we just clarify what's being pulled since there's two different?
Okay, so the items that I have being pulled are the, from what I understand, is the Authorization to Purchase New and Replacement Turnout Gear?
No.
It's the, okay, so you have, then you have the enclosed trench rescue trailer.
Correct, I have a different agenda.
Okay, and then Councilman Brightwell wanted, had questions on the Westlaw, on those two items. The trench rescue trailer and Westlaw Online. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, the motion that was stated by Councilman Hicks was to approve the items after the discussion of the questions that we had.
Yes, to me, because we've got two different lists here. Where did you stop in what you said? Are you going from the agenda where you received on Friday?
Yes. Which ends at item J.
There's two different agenda items, so.
Council President, one's clarification?
Yes.
Do you need the agenda, you have the agenda from Friday? Maybe what was put outside by staff is different.
I have the published agenda, which has consent agenda items A through J. The last item is the annual update to the city's investment policy. There was a previous agenda that had two items. One was pulled before being published, which was the liquor license request. And the other item was the McKennan Associates, which is now an administrator item. That hopefully clarifies the questions. So.
I'm missing some communications here.
There's two different sets of agendas that we have. The agenda, consent agenda items go from A through J.
That's what I'm working with.
Then you have the correct version, yes.
That's what I'm working with, I pulled it down today.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We just need to be clear because the audience have what we pulled and it's not correct. The audience's copy is not correct.
Right.
The agendas that we picked up up front are not correct.
Actually, this is, I got this one from the hallway.
Well, ours don't look like yours and we got it from there too.
There's two sets of different agendas up there, but it's okay.
So in ours where it says needs.
So to help counsel, do you need copies of the agenda that go from item A through J?
So we're just, it's just, the easiest way to correct it is the two bottom items.
Mr. Chair, is the first one too, so there's three. If anyone in the audience have A through M, we have pulled A and L and M, the three items that say need letters.
Okay.
And then we're all set.
Okay. And I know that Councilman Hicks did read off which ones we were.
He did, he read the right ones.
Correct, okay.
Yeah.
So, we do have the motion, which we can restate, just so we're all on the same page?
I think we're good.
No.
Okay, but so I still need someone to second the motion before discussion?
I'll second, I thought Councilman Banks had seconded, but I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Hoag, for consent agenda items A through J. And I will repeat them right before the vote, just so we're all on the same page. But we did have two questions. I will ask our fire chief to come up. We had the question on the, to purchase an outfit, a replacement of the enclosed trench rescue trailer. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. What are we doing with the old trench rescue trailer and equipment that we had?
Normally, we try to repurpose it if we can. Right now, we don't have a, we don't have a disposable. Normally, we get.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Normally, we'll get with our purchasing department and put it out that we would sell our old trailer. It's normally, normally the practice of what we do with our old equipment.
So, did we get, did we get our old trailer from this company? I mean, was there any type of a trade-in? A lot of times you do a trade-in or?
No, that was not offered, that was not offered with us now.
So we haven't put, the purchasing agent hasn't?
Of how we're going to dispose of that trailer?
Yes.
I don't know if we're going to repurpose it right now, if we're going to repurpose it or if we're going to try to sell it.
Okay. And I forgot, that piece of equipment, is this how old, the older one?
Yeah, it's approximately twenty-four years old. If you remember the trench rescue we had back in the day on Nine Mile and the ravines, that's, you know, when we had to have the Pontiac Fire Department come down to help us, this is the trailer that we bought when we actually threw that incident. But it's been, yeah. It's, a lot of change, a lot of changes have happened in twenty-four years with trench rescue. And we just needed a trailer that's able to outfit all the extra equipment that we need now.
I guess time flies, I thought it was like six years, so, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this item?
No.
Councilman Brightwell, you had a question for the city attorney?
I'm typically, this item is purely one for informational purposes only. And that typically would hit various departments or organizations for being late with dealing with contracts. But I want to compliment the law department for getting something out. This contract is up for renewal in April. And they, they, I noticed those kind of things and they are renewing that contract right now. And the reason I hitchhike on, hit on renewal of the contract, there's a lot of opportunity lost. When you renew your contract early sometime, you can get discounts, you get money back or whatever. And I just want to compliment the law department for renewing their contract, which is not expiring until April. And you are, your department is forever in the right now, in my good graces, because you guys just got it done, I appreciate it. So that's just a compliment. All right.
Okay. So just to recap, we have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve the following consent agenda items. A, the Oakland County Human Trafficking Task Force Agreement between Oakland County and the City of Southfield. B, Authorization to Purchase New and Replacement Turnout Gear for the Fire Department. C, Purchase an Upfit of a Replacement of the Enclosed Trench Rescue Trailer for the Fire Department. D, Authorization to Purchase Westlaw Online and Print Legal Research Products for the City Attorney's Office. E, Authorization to Extend the Lead Service Verification and Replacement Contract. F, Approval of an Agreement for the Beach Road Pathway from Nine Mile to Chiwasi. G, Approval for Rutland Avenue Reconstruction and Water Main Improvements between Northwestern Highway and Nine Mile. The Annual Adoption of the 2025 Poverty Exemption Guidelines under MCL 211.7U. The annual update, item I, the annual update of Depository Resolution. And item J, the annual update of the city's investment policy. Any further questions, counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move into our public hearings and site plans. And our first item is PSLU 24-0020, Special Use Request by American Mulch Producers to modify and expand its existing operations at 21101 and 28801 Boining Drive and the adjacent parcels.
Good evening. I'm going to introduce this item, the special land use request, as well as the vacation of a portion of Maple Ridge Ave. The petitioner is American Mulch Producers. The address is 21101 and 28801 Boining Drive, as well as 20905, 20921 Maple Ridge Ave. And parcel number 2435-351026, 027, 028, and 038. Existing zoning is I-1 Industrial and P-Vehicular Parking. The applicant has liked to vacate an unimproved northern stub of Maple Ridge Ave right away that extends into the parcel and to modify and expand existing mulch operations to include surrounding parcels, hours of operation, nine AM to seven PM. You can see here, L-shaped, there's a fifty-foot vehicular parking buffer adjacent to the residence. The total site with all the parcels are shown in light blue. It is consistent with our future land use plan. The green dash indicates the portion of this Maple Ridge which would be vacated. Easements would be put in place to access any utilities there. But you can see that it's almost an invisible paper street that's been encroached on through the operations. They would just like to have that to give them more area for maneuvering. The areas in the red dash are the expansion properties that will allow some of their machinery and operations to be pulled further away from the residential to the north and east, west, excuse me. These are existing utilities. Existing conditions, this shows the portion of the fifty-foot vehicular parking buffer, although that extends to where some of the vegetation is shown, where the actual property line begins. This is some of their existing operation photos. Some of the buildings on the site. This property would be acquired and repurposed. And then here's the existing site plan. And then the proposed site plan is to consolidate those parcels on the southern portion of Maple Ridge to move the mulching, chipping operations further away from residential use. And then the building on the south would be repurposed for their activities. With that, I'd like to invite the petitioner to come up and make a few additional comments. And then we'd like to open the public hearing and answer questions that counsel may have.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Ken Moreland, 29895 Greenfield Road, Southfield, Michigan. I'm with Dorchen Martin and Associates, where the architect's representing the applicant, Mr. Randy Blackman, who is here with me this evening. Mr. Blackman did acquire the three parcels directly to the south in order to expand his current operation, which would allow him to relocate some of the equipment three hundred to five hundred feet further away from the residential areas to the north and would then reducing the impact of any noise or dust nuisances. With that, I would ask Mr. Blackman to give a quick presentation as to his operation.
Thank you for your time again this evening. As mentioned, we've been working on a plan for a number of years to continue to allow our business to grow here in the city of Southfield and coexist with the neighbors around us. This plan helps meet every one of those requirements. We worked very closely with many city departments to get to this point, with the neighbors to get to this point. And it's a great solution going forward for all of us, so we appreciate your time and attention to it. And really do appreciate the opportunity to continue to invest with the city of Southfield for our business. So thank you.
All right. We will have a public hearing and we'll bring you back up afterwards. So I will declare the public hearing open for PSLU 24-0020, the special use request by American Mulch Producers, as was just shown on the screen. If you have any comments, please come to the podium, you will have three minutes. And please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening to each and every one of you, good evening, Mayor. My name is Evangeline Glover, my residence is at 20966 Evergreen Road. I am the neighbor of American Mulch, Mr. Randy Blackman. And several of us, and we are backyard neighbors. Some of us have experienced some unsafe events with the American Mulch Company. Randy has been a great neighbor, talking to us and working out a safety net for us. One of the issues I have experienced is being at home, my back patio doors were open, my windows were open, and I ended up with a sawdust storm due to the, due to the sawdust not being high enough to protect the environment and from coming to our neighbors. And so, Mr. Blackman, we talked and he wanted, he had something in place, which is here with the city council. And to my belief that he's been here quite a while and this has been delayed. I've also had another neighbor who had a large piece of wood in his backyard. And so, I'm here representing my neighbors, which is on Evergreen, that this no longer be delayed. That today, when we leave here, that whatever the red tape will now be the green tape to go ahead. For him to have those safety plans in place to protect the neighbors. We must say that he has been very cooperative, he's been a good neighbor, communication-wise, and also putting things in place. He also compensated me because the sawdust was in my home, all in my TV room, and I happened to be working that day. All of my property and him and his staff has been very instrumental on making sure that that doesn't happen anymore. But today, I would like to see this matter concluded so he can move forth, so we won't have those issues again when the weather change and the season change. We know that we're all dealing with Michigan and some construction, it is seasonal. And so, after today, he stated that it is important for him to start now instead of until January and February, which would delay this process even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? I will mention the council did receive a letter from Timothy Bannon, who also lives on Melrose, with a number of questions, concerns. There were some good parts of the plan, some bad parts of the plan, but a copy was given to the city clerk for the records and to the city planner as well.
Yes, I could just summarize some of his concerns, and this was shared with the applicant, so he can address them as well. Mr. Bannon's request is that they switch to electric grinders only. He does, he is in favor of the year-round business. He states they could not start too early and end operations earlier and not operate on weekends and major summer holidays. We did talk about that a little bit, Randy address. Not operating on legal holidays is a concession to the neighbors. He'd like to see the wetlands protected, but we already have that in place. And this gentleman brought up the issue of a masonry wall, and this was dealt with years ago. So, when there's a wall requirement, there's also the ability, if you have a fifty-foot setback, that a wall wouldn't be required. And this was addressed during the original special land use approval. That is why that vehicular parking fifty feet was put in place to separate from the property boundary. And at the time, a six-foot. And at the time, a six-foot masonry wall didn't seem to be prudent when it was granted 15-foot-high wood chips and that the 50-foot buffer would serve the residence better than having a six-foot masonry wall. So that issue hadn't been addressed previously.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no one else come up to the podium, the public hearing is closed. We'll ask the petitioner to come back up. And council, do you have, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Anything you'd like to add?
Sure, thanks. I'll be brief. Number one, thank you for the kind words of support. I do want to clarify two things. The process hasn't been delayed. We know it takes time to work from planning department to commission, to Planning Commission to council. So we're right on pace and we appreciate that. The only other comment I would make is this plan, which is critical to satisfy the majority of the neighbors, but we treat safety as a first priority, no matter what. So I just want to clarify, whether or not you approve this plan, and I hope you approve this plan because it's the best solution, safety is still always in the utmost and it won't, it won't change. We think about it every single day with the heavy equipment that we use. So that's really important. As far as this letter, I just received it a little bit ago. It's quite a lot in there. Much of it, a little fictitious. But I would say the majority of his concerns deal with the previous plan. That is not relevant to today's topic. But I will say, in meeting with Mr. Bannon, he does support the plan as he qualifies in there. I think he's got some historical concerns that really are outside the scope of what we're doing today.
Okay. Mr. Planner, do you have anything else to add?
If the council doesn't have any questions, I can read the recommended resolution.
Okay.
So this is a recommended resolution on PSLU 24-0020, special use request by American Mulch Producers to modify and expand existing operations. I'll just go to the pertinent parts here. This will be subject to approval of the street vacation requests that we'll deal with next. It's also subject to approval of waivers by the zoning board of appeals. Significantly, it deals with the obscuring fence, the screening wall, and the height of the piles, which will increase from 50 feet to 30 feet. The neighbors were in favor of that because they believe it will reduce noise. And then outside storage setback from the right-of-way. Again, those are zoning board of appeal issues. It's also subject to approval of administrative site plan by the planning department. And the hours of operation are currently 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, spring, summer, fall. Mr. Blackman agreed to start later in the morning at 9:00 if he can operate year-round. And I believe he only grinds about 150 days a year. He also agreed to, on federal-recognized holidays, not to do any grinding operations. So that's it, summary of the resolution for approval of the special land use.
Okay. And second?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve PSLU 24-0020 with all the conditions as presented. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item through the chair is the public hearing regarding the street vacation.
Okay. And as you mentioned, this is just to vacate that green dotted area?
That's correct. And easement will be put in place for access of utilities should the city ever need to.
All right. So if you want to have a seat, we'll get you some exercise this evening. This is a public hearing for PSV 24-0001, the street vacation request of Randy Blackman, American Mulch Producers, to vacate the portion of Maple Ridge Avenue right away that extends into and is surrounded by the property located at 21101 Boning Drive. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record should you wish to speak on this street vacation request. All right, don't all comment at once. All right, seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, any questions? All right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
We have a resolution above regarding PSV 24-0001, the street vacation request by Randall Blackman, American Mulch Producers, subject to the following conditions. Retention of an easement for the operation maintenance, repair, and replacement of the Owens Relief Drain and all existing public and private utilities located within the subject portion of the Maple Ridge Avenue right-of-way. Future use of the subject property, including a vacated road right-of-way, will be subject to the requirement standards and conditions of the zoning ordinance and the special land use that has been approved. And lot combinations shall be applied for through the Southfield Assessing Department.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I saw move.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve PSV 24-0001. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, our next item is PZR 24-0012, a request to rezone 1.1 acres of land at the north end of Bush Street on the eastern side of the street from R1 Single Family to RT Attached Single Family.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The petitioner is Harpo Chain Construction. Address is 23458, 23472, 23488 Bush Street. These are vacant parcels. Existing zoning is R1. Proposed zoning is RT Attached Single Family. And all you're considering tonight is the proposed rezoning of the three parcels on the east side of Bush Street from R1 Single Family to RT Attached Single Family. Any site plan would be dealt with at a later time. As you can see, this is at the northern end of a stub street with industrial and vehicular parking located to the west. These are existing conditions of the site. People are presently using his property as a turnaround. Now, we only share these as conceptual site plans because this is what he'd like to be able to do. We haven't vetted this for, does it actually fit? But given that the underlying zoning is one unit per 9,000 square feet, and this is just over an acre, it's possible four to five single-family units, if it's laid out properly, could be fit on the site. This would increase the density by one to two units. There were some questions about what's being proposed conceptually. And there was a request by council to show existing condominiums that the developer has built in other communities. And he has provided Morgan Waterfront Estates. There's two images here showing the quality and style of attached units. Now condominiums, again, are ownership. They're not rental. And then these are some close-up elevations and perspectives of what was built similar to what he's proposing on the parcel. Now again, all you're considering tonight is the rezoning from R1 to RT. These were provided before of the types of things, houses that he had developed in the city of Southfield. So you could see that he has some experience. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant up. If you want to add any additional comments before we open the public hearing.
Okay. I like that. Right to the point. All right. So we have a public hearing for PZR 24-0012. It's a request to rezone 1.1 acres of land at the north end of Bush Street from R1 Single Family to RT Attached Single Family. You saw some of the conceptual drawings of what they'd like to do should the rezoning go through. But we are only talking about the rezoning at this point that would allow the
Potential.
Potential project, thank you. If you have any comments, please step forward. And you will have three minutes. And we, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council, council, and mayor, et cetera. My name is Henry Jespersen. Over here, yeah, sorry. My name is Henry Jespersen. I live at 23463 Berg Road. So I purchased this property about a year ago. It is my residence on that property. And the back of my property actually, actually borders with this property that you're putting up for rezoning. So I have some concerns about it. My purchase is, it's kind of a unique house on almost two acres.
Excuse me, can you speak up, please?
Sorry, I'm getting some feedback.
Yeah, move it up.
Closer?
Yes.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Not a lot of experience in public speaking, my apologies. Yeah, so I purchased this house. It's on almost two acres. It's on Berg Road, 23463 Berg Road. Purchased it a year ago. I'm in the process of fixing up the house, doing improvements to the house and the property. The back, the back of the lot borders this parcel or three parcels that you're considering for rezoning. I do have some concerns about that. It seems, I was a little surprised that you were actually wanting to put condos up at the end of a short dead-end street in a neighborhood of single-family homes. I mean, pretty much, it's, you know, Bush Street, Berg Road, that whole area is, as far as I could tell and have noticed, primarily single-family homes. Yes, I know there are some apartments on Lake Nine Mile, maybe Eight Mile area. That makes sense. I don't think it's appropriate to put condos up at the end of a dead-end street in a single-family neighborhood. I'm concerned about the impact on my property value. I'm concerned about my privacy. I'm concerned about the impact on the wildlife. There's a lot of deer, also other animals, deer, wild turkey, et cetera. I have deers walking through the wooded back portion of my lawn and the rest of my yard almost, pretty much daily. They sleep back there in the back of my wooded area. They live there. They forage for food there. And I'm concerned about the impact, primarily on the deer, but all the wild animals in the area. And so I just wanted to express my concern and the appropriateness of putting in one large building of five, four, five, six condos where there's single-family homes. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Peg Palazowski. I live at 23406 Bush Street, Southfield, Michigan. Did you get paperwork from Mike Wilson?
Yes.
You do have that? Okay, you have that in record. My family's owned this property since 1940. You know, they're trying to tell me this is affordable housing. The house across the street just listed for $219,000 this week. It's going to sit there. We like our street. Most delivery trucks use my drive to turn around in, and it's one of the reasons we, you know, put in a heavy-duty drive. The property you want to build on has sat vacant for years. It would be nice to see it develop just as single-family homes only. This plan destroys our neighborhood. You all work for us. We voted you in and we can vote you out. Part of your job is to listen to what we have to say. I'm still waiting on a reply from Thomas Pace to see how this will affect our taxes. Our taxes keep rising and I do not believe we will not take another hit for this one. People are fed up with being bullied and taxed. They like to say you cannot fight City Hall. We can vote them all out when they forget that they work for us. We did not hire you to destroy our neighborhood and we like our neighborhood the way it is. R1, not with the condos. It just doesn't fit into our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'd like to ask the petitioner to come up. You've heard some of the comments. Do you have any, anything you'd like to reply or add? If you can, can you please give your name and address for the record?
Yes, Ken Allen, 6195 Oak Trail, West Bloomfield, Michigan. I'm not going to comment on the things that he had stated. We're here for a rezoning.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any other questions on the rezoning? Mr. Crowde?
We did investigate with our city assessor's office on the values. The price point is $300,000 and higher. There was a single-family home that's built right around the corner, I believe on Helen in Nine Mile. And that has been valued at approximately $450,000. When we asked the question about taxes increase, they stated that there would be no significant increase in property taxes from adjacent properties because the number of units being built would not have an effect one way or the other. As you know, the rate of tax increase is either 5% or rate of inflation, which is, whichever is lower. So this four-to-six unit is single-family. It just happens to be attached single-family, and it is ownership. And again, just considering from R1 to RT to allow, allow for the potential for this type of development. Those are hopefully responding to the questions that were raised.
Counsel, do you have any other questions? All right.
I'd like to just add one item. My name's Mike Bishop, 32821 Wareham Court. Been working with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Allen on the layout and the plans for this development. One thing I would just kind of mention and outline to consider is, you know, this is currently zone R1. So as has been discussed, this could be anywhere from four, four-to-six lots, depending on how it's done. When you get into the R1 layouts with options for accessory buildings, excuse me, accessory buildings or detached garages, that type of thing, you know, there's a lot of variations that could happen with those layouts, however they're done. This would be a little bit more of a controlled layout and controlled plan where accessible parking, landscaping, basically a cleanup or possibly a better use of this property to get a multi-unit facility, multi-unit building in. So it's just another item to consider. You know, there would be some control to keep the amount of outbuildings or any other, you know, driveways, that type of thing in play. So just, just one other item to mention when you compare the two from, from R1 to the proposed layout of a condo.
And I don't want to beat a dead horse. And hopefully, we can talk about this at a future study meeting. But construction costs, Mr. Zorn would confirm, are around $200 a square foot. And so when you start having the individualized units, you're getting closer to that $450,000 range. Now these, we said they're affordable. They're not low-income. They're more affordable as a starter home for young adults, family forming, and even older adults who want to downsize. So by building them together, there's a cost savings. The price point's closer to $300,000 as opposed to 450 and up. And again, we talked about, you know, the need to provide missing metal housing and some medium- And again, we talked about, you know, the need to provide missing metal housing and some medium density housing. We don't have a lot of large tracts of undeveloped single family left in this city, so I just ask you to keep that in mind while you're considering the rezoning tonight.
Okay. Counselwoman Banks?
Thank you. Question to Mr. Crowde, and I know this is just the rezoning, but should this be approved? The, the questions posed by Mr. Jespersen regarding the property will be in his backyard. The city can like request like bushes or fencing or something like that?
Sure, we, I mean, you, you, you could see through here, let me see if I can find the aerial. There's, there's a significant woodlot in the, in the rear here from the petition, the resident who spoke during the public hearing. And with the layout, we can require some of this to be saved and we can require additional landscape screening to be put in place if needed. I would say that the units would be placed approximately in the center of the lots. So there, there would be some buffer that we could work in that would preserve some screening and buffering from the adjacent property owner. I'm, I'm kind of curious, if he has two acres, there's probably some significant depth from the property on Berg to the back of the property here. I'd like to further investigate that during the site plan review. So, you could see here, here's, I, I believe this is the gentleman that spoke. You see a significant rear yard, rear yards from all the properties on Berg to, to the site itself. And then we could have an additional buffering put on the rear of the property.
Thank you, Mr. Crowde.
Counselwoman Hoag?
I just wanted to say that, I think it was mentioned that, or in the letter from Mr. Wilson, that, you know, it could bring renters. We don't know what property will bring renters. Someone can own their home today and decide tomorrow, I'm gonna move south and rent it out. When we look at this, not that this, what we're voting on tonight is gonna approve anything, however, it is surrounded by a lot of trees, I don't know if you guys have looked and, and actually seen the pictures. It's down the street from one of our members' church, and it is a big lot, certainly it's a big lot. And just around the corner, I know because I looked to myself, that house was selling for over four hundred thousand.
Four fifty, I believe.
And then down the street, some more, so this isn't cheap realty that's coming here. I think that when you look at it, there's ample space for housing, and I think that it, it would add to the neighborhood. And I know it's difficult, I, I know what, we had, the resident indicate, we, we can't leave a lot of this land just empty. We have to, we have a housing shortage here in Southfield. And so, I mean, this, this is a big lot, you know, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? Turn on your mic, please.
You did say that they won't be back to back, because they were saying right, they're in the backyard, so it's not really in their backyard.
No, it's not.
Because I have almost like two acres and there's a fence and there's property behind. So the wildlife that comes through there is still that, that given area, that land, so it's not like they're back to back.
No, they're not.
Counselwoman Haynes, I'm looking at it, it's a lot of trees that separates.
It's just like where I live, it's, it's, Southfield is like that.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand what you were saying about being back to back. But I agree with what she's saying about the housing shortage, that's really important. And I know how you feel when, sometimes when someone comes with something new in your neighborhood, you might be a little bit indifferent to it, but I like, I like the plan, I like the idea of the housing. I mean, I know it's different, the condos are different in housing, but the appearance of it looks very nice and, you know, just mixed use seems to be pretty good in a lot of the neighborhoods and it really works.
Yes, we wanted to try to make something that was affordable for the single, you know, a single person or a person that just, you know, just got married. Opposed to building a full five hundred thousand dollar house on that parcel.
And it's still expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, just saying, you know, it's affordable, but to certain people.
Yes, yes, correct, correct.
That's not, that's not low income, you know, that's affordable, but not, we understand.
Right, correct.
And I'll, I'll just add, you know, you, you're not new to Southfield, you've done a number of developments here, a number of homes. Some of them are, are on the higher end, so you, you, you are familiar with the Southfield standard, what we like, what we prefer, what our residents like.
Correct.
So it's gonna be something that, again, we're talking about the rezoning, but because it's come up with, you know, with the potential projects that you're looking to do, I think that should this pass and you come back with a project, I don't think it's going to be ostentatious. I think it'll be something that will fit in with, within that street, within that, that neighborhood and will be desirable and, and, you know, bring people in, so. Counselwoman Hoag?
I would agree, and I was just gonna say, one of your other properties I just saw also just sold for over half a million.
Yes.
That you built.
Yes.
And I think it was on Beach.
That was on, um, Staunton.
Yeah, you, you sent the pitch, because I know the owner.
Right.
And it went like that.
On Beach, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so it, it just shows to the quality of the work. And so it's, it's not gonna be something shabby, it's gonna seriously, I think, and again, we're not voting on anything but just the rezoning, but I, I, I appreciate the, your work because it's, it's no shabby work. They are top dollar, excellent quality homes from what I've seen.
And we, we actually have one going up on Aberdeen Street right now. We're digging the basement on Aberdeen, two, eight, four, nine, two Aberdeen. They're over there digging, well, you know, they started today.
Mr. Crowde, I know this, this question has come up with the site plan. Whenever a plan is submitted, will this be coming back to the council?
Well, I did look into that. If you recall when the young man, Maximilian, he wanted to do two units, and there was a three unit minimum. If it's under three, it comes back to council automatically. If it's over, it'd be under Planning Commission Site Plan, but I made a commitment to you that we would bring it back for discussion purposes so that you could give input on the site plan if it's for, in that four to six acre unit range.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I know you build houses all over. Our kids are buying their grandmother's houses, so it's just, it's part of the reason why you're building the style that you are, because I know they're sort of downsizing or looking at a different look, more like condo size, is that part of the reason?
Yes, yes, they, you know, they don't like, they don't like the large home. Young people don't want, they want some small kinda compact where they can just come in, throw their things down and leave, you know. And it's, it's just a good area, it's a church right up the street, I think we're gonna pre-sell those before they even go up.
And if I could add, you know, the trend, especially with young, younger buyers, they don't want the maintenance.
Right.
They don't wanna be cutting the grass, this'll be a condominium, so
Trust me, I know.
Each of the owners will be one-six owner to take care of the plowing the grass and so forth. They like the high-end wifi, the nice appliances and features, but they don't wanna be tied down with maintenance of a yard. And we see that across the board.
Right, correct.
All right. Counselwoman Brightwell?
This is disinformation, well, me really, but Mr. Crowe, from a, from a, from a demographic standpoint, and also the census, census standpoint, what is, what is considered to be a starter home pricing range right today?
Well, I, I'd have to do a little more research, but I would say this price point is in the, that starter, starter home range. And it's all about getting a mortgage and how much money you have to put down for the principal, interest, taxes and insurance. So depending on what your income is, there's, you know, a threshold that the bank is gonna lend money on for financing. And, and this is more in that range. At two hundred dollars a square foot, you, you know, it's just not economies of scale to build something around a thousand square feet unless it's you know, you got fifteen hundred square feet, that's a three hundred thousand dollar home right there. So, again, this is affordable, it's not low income.
Okay.
And it's gonna be based on the income of an individual or their partner, and then what they can afford for financing. Interest rates have come down a little bit, but that, that plays into how much people can afford.
Okay, all right.
I can tell you, there is a need for the, the master ensuite first floor bedroom. That's whether you're an older adult downsizing or a young family or young adults starting out, that is what's desirable in the market.
Okay.
And I believe that's part of your model.
And that's what we have, we do have a first floor. We try to have a first floor master suite in most of our units that we have, just in case if, you know, someone have to move in, mom have to move in, dad have to move in, you know. The one that we did on Staunton, we did a master suite on that one as well.
You know, another trend that we've seen over the last thirty, forty years is a shrinking of a household size and fewer children. And I think this last census was the first time that we had a slight tick increase in population, we've been losing for thirty, forty years. We need to build a lot more housing to increase our, our population in this community that has ever increasing greater percentage of older adults. We need, we need some housing to bring in some new residents to the community, and this is just one small step.
Okay, I, so I surmise that starter home prices depends on the zip code basically, what's in that zip code. And based on the fact that we brought the fact with the assessor at the last time, and he gave us the basic home price and that zip code over there, so. All right, well, good, you answered my question, around by, but I came to conclusion what I need to know.
All right, Madam Clerk, do you have a question?
Um, yes, Ken Allen, my address, need that again? Do you need the address? Okay.
And Mike Bishop? All right. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion, if there is one.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that PZR twenty-four dash zero, zero, one, two rezoning request of Ken Allen of Harpo Chain Construction to rezone prop, to rezone three parcels on the east side of Bush Street be approved.
Support.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Banks, supported by Counselwoman Hoag, to approve PZR two, four, dash, zero, zero, one, two as presented. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair?
Thank you.
We need that introduction of ordinance number eighteen oh two?
Mr. President?
Yep.
I move that ordinance number eighteen oh two rezoning request for the previous rezoning project be approved.
Support.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Banks, supported by Counselwoman Hoag, to introduce ordinance number one, eight, zero, two. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next public hearing is for PZR ODD two, four, dash, zero, 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 three, to amend the ODD at two, nine, seven, seven, seven Telegraph.
Thank you, through the chair, this was under your study session and consideration at your last council meeting. This is an amendment to a previously approved ODD. The petitioner is Rosetta Building Company located at two, nine, seven, seven, seven Telegraph Road is the property address. Existing zoning is ODD with underlying B3. The request is to amend the approved ODD agreement to permit the construction of a Culvers Restaurant on the northeastern outlet. Culvers hours of operation daily, ten AM to eleven PM. This is the property, existing conditions, and then the outlet location. This was, was previously approved, similar location, but for two restaurants with a drive-through, that was conceptually. This is the Culvers with a dual ordering station and stacking. This was the previously approved elevations, and this is what's being proposed. And this is a conceptual rendering of the proposed Culvers. And with that, I'd like to invite the developer to come up. Andrew, if you wanna add any comments to the project?
Hi, Andrew Zelke, four, five, six, four Oak Ridge Road, Clarkstown, Michigan, four, eight, three, four, eight. Looking to seek an approval to build a Culvers, an outlet parcel of the Onyx Complex and revise the ODD to reflect a new Culvers building with a double drive-through. This Culvers will bring an additional fifty to sixty new jobs to the, to the area and will not be deleterious to the community and I think would be a great fit on this outlet parcel.
All right, we'll have a public hearing, see what questions we have. This is a public hearing for PZR ODD two, four, dash, zero, 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 three, to amend the already approved ODD for the rezoning at two, nine, seven, seven, seven Telegraph, to update the master development plan to permit the development of the northeastern lot for a Culvers Restaurant. If anyone has any comments, you have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that the request to amend the approved ODD rezoning for two, nine, seven, seven, seven Telegraph Road, Onyx Overlay Development District, to update the master plan development, to permit the development for an outlet for a Culvers Restaurant be approved.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Banks, supported by Counselwoman Haynes, to approve PZR ODD two, four, dash, zero, 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 three. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that council introduces ordinance, ordinance number eighteen oh three, rezon, the request to amend the approved ODD.
It has been moved by Counselwoman Banks, supported by Counselwoman Haynes, to introduce ordinance number one, eight, zero, three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, our last public hearing for the evening is PZR RUDD two, four, dash, zero, 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 two, the request of the John Grace Arms LDH LLC to amend the approved residential unit development district rezoning in agreement for two, one, zero, three, zero Indian Street, to update the master development plan and to modify the provision related to the public park, building configuration and elevation, stormwater management, parking and landscaping.
Through the chair, this was also discussed at your last meeting, this is also an amendment to a previously approved, in this case, residential unit development district, property located at two, one, zero, three, zero Indian Street. The amendment is specific to that the city retain ownership of the park area as a separate parcel measuring approximately zero point six one acres, to reconfigure the park area to provide a tot lot along Indian Street and a walking path around a naturalized stormwater rain garden, land banking of seventeen parking spaces along the park side of the housing project, reconfigure the courtyard of the new building to include a rain garden dog run, revisions to the building increasing rear setback from forty-two, seven to forty-seven, one, and revise elevations on the new building to increase energy efficiency. A lot of these changes were predicated on the funding sources and the review of the National Park Service, their historic preservation office that required a reorientation of the new building. Again, existing conditions. So the previously approved plan had a U-shaped additional building that was facing east and the, based on comments on, on energy efficiencies and the windows were removed, they were based on comments on on energy efficiencies and the windows were removed, they were downsized, the balconies were removed. Some of the exterior elevations were changed. The area of breezeway between the two old building and new building. Again, these were all coming at the request of the federal government and the housing financing to score points. And then this shows the revised building orientation per the National Park Service Historic Preservation Office. The footprint itself hasn't changed, it's the orientation. And given all those things, it required a major modification to the previously approved plans. With that, I'd like to request the petitioner come up and add any additional comments. If she feels it's necessary, then we'll go into the public hearing.
Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Janay Eisenmenger, three six two seven West Werner Highway, Detroit, Michigan. I have no additional comments to add unless the counsel has questions for me.
We'll see, we'll see what questions come up after the public hearing. Alright, so I will open the public hearing now for PZR RUDD two four dash zero 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 two. The request from John Grace Arms to amend the approved RUDD rezoning agreement for two one zero three zero Indian Street. If you have any comments, please come to the podium, give your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes. Alright, seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, do you have any questions for the petitioner? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve PZR RUDD twenty-four dash zero 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 two, the request of John Grace Arms LDH LLC to amend the approved residential unit development district, the RUD rezoning and agreement for the two ten thirty Indian Street, John Grace Arms, to update the master development plan, to modify the provisions related to the public park, building configuration and elevation, stormwater management, parking and landscaping.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PZR RUDD two four dash zero 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 two as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number one eight zero four.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to introduce ordinance number one eight zero four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna excuse myself, but I wanted to wish you a happy Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Alright, next we'll move on to the council portion of our agenda, and we have one item.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the expense report for Council Pro Tem Hicks for training and conference at the NLC convention in Tampa, Florida, November twelfth through the sixteenth.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the travel expense report for Council Pro Tem Hicks for the National League of Cities Convention in Tampa, Florida. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, thank you. And then for council, we will go in alphabetical order, so we will start with.
I didn't hear you, which is?
We're gonna go in alphabetical order this evening. Switch it up, keep you on your toes. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I would just like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. May two thousand and twenty-five bring good health, happiness, love and joy to you and your loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
For the veterans, um, the, in February, February sixth, for female veterans, there'll be a program. It's called Strive, T H R I V E, that will assist you in Bill of Resilience and Fundamentals. It's being put on by the Oakland County Community Health Network. And from this particular program, you will learn how to improve your coping coping mechanisms, manage trauma and protect against suicide and also hone your resilience mindset and build trusted relationships. As again, as stated, this is being put on by the Oakland County Health Network. And if you're interested, please reach a Ms. Christie Kuhn. She's the state regional veterans coordinator. And she's working with warriors, working with warriors. Her number is one eight zero, one, I'm sorry, one eight one zero three eight eight seven three six five. And you have to register for this program, it's being offered on February the sixth in, in Troy. And although you may not be a veteran, most people know veterans and I I get feedback often that individuals, they were informed their resident, I mean, their, their siblings or neighbor. And it's documented that only, veterans have a lot of benefits that do them, that they have earned. And it's documented that only forty-eight percent of veterans in the United States receive these, these benefits. So there's a wide gulf of, of things out there that we try to repay the individuals who served our country. And then again, if you want additional info, just give me a call here at City Hall. And it's, or and I'll reach out to Ms. Christie Kuhn at one eight eight one zero three eight eight seven three six five. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haynes?
Just would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and may the spirit of this season bring your family true peace and also sharing the love of giving to others, especially those that do not have and they may be experiencing not such a good time during this season. We can offer friendship and hope to them. And Happy Hanukkah to those as well. And Happy Kwanzaa and looking forward to a blessed new year for all of us, especially our city. And that we will experience true peace here within our residents and each other. And that we can be more loving and forgiving of each other and bring that into the year of twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanna echo the sentiments from my peers and wish you all a happy holiday. I want to give a special thanks to those in, who are responsible for all the lighting in the front of City Hall. Every morning as I take my daughter to school, I have to slow down so that she can take it all in, every morning. But, you know, it's, it's well done. Also want to thank both chiefs, Baron and Menifee, for the toy giveaway this weekend. It was appreciated by the community because I saw cars going all the way up to Evergreen to get in line to get the gifts for the young ones in our area. So thank you all for all that you do. You don't have to, but you do it with a smile and it was cold Saturday. And they were out there for hours, so thank you all. Happy holiday.
Alright, Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too would like to wish everyone happy holidays. Especially during this time when there's so many people suffering. I'd like us all to take just a moment to think of those that lost their lives today in Madison, Wisconsin with the shooting there. I personally just dealt with a tragedy in my family as well where a family member was the one killed in the runway accident not too long ago in Detroit. Just simply going home from work and the young lady was going the wrong way. And it's just time of tragedies and and just people are suffering. So if we can remember the reason for the season and put away petty grievances and really just embrace life, embrace each other. Let's take it now and take it into the new year. And just make our surroundings and each other a better place, restore families, friendships and everything. So happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, and I don't want to belabor everything that was said, but, you know, happy holidays and whatever you're celebrating. Hopefully it's enjoyable with your family, friends, neighbors. It was mentioned earlier in our meeting, you know, the council is, is already working on plans for next year, whether it's road construction or other things. So we have a lot of things, a lot of good things planned for next year. And I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues to make sure that Southfield is the premier place to work, live, play, stay, worship, all the good stuff. And, and we are working towards a lot of good things for next year. So and please remember to, to be safe, especially, you know, that some of that snow we got last week. Just take it slow, take it easy. We want you to arrive safely to wherever you're going. And Mr. Mayor?
Just to add that on Saturday, I think the thing that Councilman Hicks and Councilwoman Haynes and I experienced with a number of community partners, plus the police and fire department, was the absolute joy on some of the kids' faces. They, we were trying to talk to some of them and they just wanted to see what's in, in the bag that they've received. It was really, really fun, so although it was cold, it was worth being out there. I also want to thank council tonight for approving the John Grace Amendment. As you know, this is going to result in sixty very critically needed subsidized senior apartments. This project, we've had so many twists and turns with it. And it is really about a year delay and delay. And of course, costs keep, keep going up, so. I, I appreciate the support for this as hopefully sometime before summer twenty twenty-five, we'll be breaking ground and turning a vacant property into productive use and much-needed housing in the city of Southfield. And finally, I would add my best wishes for the holidays to everybody. Time to renew, refresh and rejuvenate, spend time with family and friends. I'll be doing that and thinking of all of you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two, or three items of business. The first pertains to development by Habitat for Humanity on Westland. And the Habitat acquired a number of parcels from the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative as well as the city and assembling the property as they've completed the units and they're hoping to close a sale by the end of this year. The subject properties were part of a Brownfield plan. The first action I'm asking for pertains to amendment number two to Brownfield Plan number two, which was the, I mean, a project of the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative in two thousand and seventeen. It's rather straightforward. The original Brownfield plan included fifty-six parcels and we're proposing to eliminate two of those parcels. Oakland County has come back to Habitat and they asked that the, in order to can, recombine the properties for the condominiums that are, have been built there, these duplexes, that these parcels be eliminated from the Brownfield plan. So the action that we have is that council authorized the second amendment and restated Brownfield plan and tax increment financing plan and a development and reimbursement agreement for the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Project, two thousand and seventeen Brownfield Plan, multiple addresses. Twenty-four thirty-one Westland Drive, parcel seventy-six twenty-four thirty-four four seventy-six zero zero two and two zero four thirty-nine Westland Drive, parcel number seventy-six twenty-four thirty-six four seventy-six zero zero one. Subject to the final review by the city attorney. Scott Milliken is here with Habitat, if there are any questions pertaining to this. And Ms. Rochelle Freeman, our Director of Economic Development, is also here. And I've placed these items on my agenda, they're literally last-minute items that came in, so I apologize for that.
Counsel, do you have any questions on these items?
Pardon?
Okay. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that the Brownfield Plan Amendment Number Two for a prod, for the Brownfield Plan Multiple Addresses be approved.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the Brownfield Plan Amendment Number Two for the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Project two thousand and seventeen, also known as SNRI Plan Number Two, Brownfield Plan for Multiple Addresses be approved. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, the next, thank you for that. The next action pertains to ask the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative, the projects in the two thousand and eighteen portfolio. And this is Plan Amendment Number One to the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Project two thousand and eighteen, Plan Number Three. And we are requesting, requesting to remove one parcel from that plan and that original plan covered thirty-five single-family homes. So we're requesting to remove one parcel and that is the parcel at two zero four twenty-three Westland Drive, parcel ID number seventy-six twenty-four thirty-four four seventy-six zero zero three. And again, Scott Milliken is here with Habitat for Humanity as, as well as Rochelle Freeman, our Business and Economic Development Director.
Counsel? Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President? I move that council approves the amended and restated Brownfield Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan and Development and Reimbursement Agreement for the Neighborhood, Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative Project two oh eighteen Brownfield Plan for two oh four two three Westland Drive.
It is moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the Brownfield Plan Amendment One for SNRI Plan Number Three as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, Scott? Three, three families will become homeowners now with this action in these new condos prior to the end of the year, correct? That's, no, so thank you for actions to make that happen and the urgency in moving it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item I have is to retain McKinnon Associates for construction plan review. The Building Department historically has used outside professional services to conduct and do plan review, construction documents and such, as well as physical plans. As we've been reviewing records, I wanted to just make sure that I have a resolution authorizing us to retain McKinnon Associates. As we were reviewing this, we could not find one. In addition, what I've instructed purchasing in the Building Department is to get an RFP out on the street requesting these services and we bring it back the first quarter of, of two thousand and twenty-five. And we've been using professional services in the Building Department. 2025. And we've been using professional services in the Building Department for years, and this is just some house cleaning as we go through our accounting system.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Brightwell?
What is the extent of this proposed contract?
I'm sorry, the?
What is the extent of the contract dollar-wise?
The dollar amount? We haven't, it's as needed. And if Chuck can come up and speak to that, we, you know, I can tell you, we've been using McKenna and Associates. They were piggybacking on a contract with planning. And when we sat down and talked to accounting, we decided that need to be cleaned up. And there are other professional contracts that have been used for years that we wanted to just go out, put a, get a bid and get a price. But what do you estimate the dollar amount was the question?
Yeah, what is the estimated dollar amount for the, let me just add to that. I know somehow City official used to work for McKenna. And so, but I just want to get a ballpark of what we're talking about here.
Do you have a potential dollar amount?
We do not have a scheduled dollar amount. That varies from subject to subject. And what I mean by that is plan reviews, commercial plan reviews, residential inspections, those type of things, they vary. However, I can say, as an educated guess, right now, we're looking at about $80,000.
$80,000, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
And it should be noted that people who apply for these documents to pay, they pay a review that covers these expenditures.
Okay.
Right. That was my, going to be my follow-up. Even though it's going to cost the city, we're essentially being reimbursed because they have to pay for their reviews, pay for the expenses.
Permit fees and inspection fees cover those expenses we incur.
Okay.
Each step of the way, they're covered, starting with plan review all the way through inspection.
So is it 100%?
Reimbursed, yes.
Reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
So why do we need to get involved in this, anyway, as an entity, the city of Southfield? Could we just leave it with the petitioner or the ones who bring it up, tell them to go get their own, someone to deal with this?
These run through the Building Department under my direction, and that's the reason for the city's involvement. We don't, we can't have someone else do their own inspections or do their own reviews. It has to run through the Building Department.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions?
And that's funny, this is an effort about cleaning this up. And, you know, there's consultants that have been used for years in this manner, and we want to just get it all cleaned up this spring.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that retain McKenna and Associates for Construction Plan Reviews.
Support? It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the request to retain McKenna and Associates for Construction Plan Reviews as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm ready to go home.
I did say three items, but.
All right.
Thank you. You know, just behind, on behalf of myself and the entire management team, the directors and that, we want to thank city council for the year we've had in '24. You as a group are incredibly optimistic, hopeful people. You wouldn't be there if you weren't. The hours you put in and the trials and tribulations you experienced, but you were very light-seeking people in a, you know, in a dark world, always looking to make things better. And, you know, I believe the same with my management team. Our, you know, we argue intensely, you know, as managers and directors, is the best way to do things, but it's always about trying to do what's right and the best for our residents here. And we thank you for that opportunity, and we wish everyone the happiest of holiday seasons and health, and enjoy the love of your family and friends. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, council. I just want to echo what everyone said. I want to wish everyone safe and peaceful, happy holidays to you and your family, and thank you for everything. And I look forward to working with you next year.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to tell everyone, echo as well what everyone has said, and wish everyone a happy and peaceful holiday. And just remember to hold on to your loved ones close, especially your children, because they grow up so fast. And that's what the holidays really are about, our children. So remember that if you need something to do and want to have some fun with your kiddies, we have ice skating rink. You can go there and ice skate and have some hot chocolate and make use of the activities that we have here in the city. We talk about the pool and the summertime activities, but ice skating is fun and refreshing, and children love it. So I just wanted to say that and tell you that our election results will be posted on the City Clerk's website within the week. And everyone, just hold on and just realize that we live in a very blessed city, and I'm grateful to live here. And ever since I've moved here, I've always said great things about the city of Southfield. So everybody watching, say good things and great things about our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other action to be, to come before us this evening? If not, I will close out our 2024 meeting schedule. Our meeting is adjourned.